Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission to order, and thank Ken and SCTV for taking. I'd like Gary to serve as the alternate to fill in. With that, the first item of business is public hearing. Application 14-02, Magliary Development LLC agent Timothy E. and Eleanor E. Ellsworth, owners, requesting re-subdivision of the property located East Wheaton Street map H11, block 106, block 037, to create four lots, zone R80. Received 10/14/2014. Public hearing must conclude by 1/27/2015. Harm, does the applicant want to address first?
Yeah, I would think that would be the best way.
Want to tell us what we're at with...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Where would you like me to stand?
That was fine, I think. You can.
Let me introduce myself first, please. I'm Mark Needleman. I represent the Magliary Development, who is the agent here tonight and is looking for approval from you for the subdivision approval such that he can move forward with the plan that we're about to set forth for you. As indicated in the call, the meeting, this is an application for re-subdivision of property on East Wheaton Street to create four lots. Of the four lots, three would be for residential purposes, three homes. The parcel in question is just in excess of 90 acres with frontage on East Wheaton Street and Talkeet Mountain Road. Currently totally undeveloped, there's a open meadow land which occupies a good part of the area and some trees. What we're seeking to do as part of this approval is to create four lots and at the same time, we would effectuate a lot line realignment such that we would create, as I indicate, three lots, one of which would be two acres with 235 feet of frontage on the private road we would be creating. The second house lot would be just in excess of two acres, call it two acres with 200 feet of frontage on this same road. The third lot being the largest being proposed, which is approximately 5.8 acres with an excess of 400 feet of frontage on the road. The remaining land, which would be in excess of 80 acres, having approximately 800 feet of frontage on East Wheaton Street. The three lots will all be contained within an R80 zone. The remaining area, there'd be a slight bit of frontage for that fourth lot, not a house lot, which would have some frontage on East Wheaton Street. Now, the fourth lot, one we don't propose to be building on, of that five acres by way of boundary line adjustment, is contemplated to be transferred to the adjoining property owner of the McCormicks. The remaining acreage of 75 acres is currently, as I understand, under contract and working its way towards a closing such that it will be sold to the Simsbury Land Trust for purposes of conservation. I think you're well aware of the Land Trust and how they manage and operate their land holdings. We are proposing an 18-foot-wide private access road which would have a hammerhead up by the driveway entrances to the three lots. And while that is a lot smaller than you would typically see, it is something that staff has not only recommended and endorsed but which we've obtained approval from the Fire Marshal, subject to, and we are in agreement, with installation of sprinklers within the three homes, thereby obviating the concerns that the Fire Marshal might otherwise have because of the more narrow road. Staff recommends it, and we certainly don't disagree, that by building the smaller road of 18 feet as opposed to 26, 30 or more, we are being less intrusive into the area. We're disturbing, less ground. The Wetlands Commission obviously was pleased once we were able to share the details of the smaller scale development of the road. We're also proposing to plant some evergreens and Mr. Dino, our surveyor, is going to lay all that out for you, to do some screening between our property and an adjoining property owner. Each of the three house lots would be served by a septic system that has been reviewed by the Farmington Valley Health District. I believe a letter has come in as recently as today. They asked us to do a couple extra test pits. We've done it, and I believe you'll hear that they are satisfied with our proposal. We also are going to have the homes serviced by well water. As indicated, we are looking to install an 18-foot road that requires a specific waiver from you. And again, as I've indicated, staff supports that and the Fire Marshal has approved it. Furthermore, there are some easements which will be granted. The Wetlands Commission was particularly concerned about it. The area adjacent to the largest of the lots is going to have a fairly significant wetlands area and rain garden, and we're going to make sure that's protected. The easement will be granted in favor of the town so that if need be, the town can enforce that, which has at times been an issue, and we've addressed that. So that shouldn't be a concern going forward. Other than that, it's a very unobtrusive proposal. Again, three house lots, all meeting the requirements of the zoning regulations, minimal disturbance to the lots, specimen trees will be marked in the field so as not to be disturbed. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dino, who can just point out some of the more technical aspects, and obviously, if there are any questions, we're here to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. I'm Brian Dino from Dino Land Survey, and we did the surveying and prepared the plans for the re-subdivision of this property. There was some question in the beginning about what was the property. So, per staff request, we've made a property, a parcel map, that shows the entire 90 acres that were left over from a previous subdivision where they cut out four house lots down here along East Wheaton Street. And now, we're going to propose to cut out this for three house lots, as Mark said, of two acres, just a little bit more than two with five acres, and by lot line revision, deed this five acres to the McCormicks who live here. It will be deeded to the McCormicks as to be made, deeded to and made part of. It won't be a separate parcel after it's deeded. So that way, we'll be constrained with all zoning requirements, and that's, you know, their frontage, it'll be made part of this, and that's why it doesn't have any frontage over here. We also intend to, as he said, deed this to the Land Trust. So, the Land Trust will have the rest of the 75 acres with the pond and the trails and the larger ravine through here, and the house lots will all be accessed from Talkeet Mountain Road with a road that's about 568 feet long, relatively flat. The road starts out at elevation 308, it ends at about elevation 514 in here. So, it's mostly like 1% through here and then jumps up to like 3% there. This plan shows the entire parcel. It shows the helco right away, and this is about elevation 324, drops down to 295, and there's some open meadows here, some dirt roads through here, woods, roads for the Land Trust to be able to traverse around the whole property. And then this is steep, rises about 200 feet from the power lines to the ridge line. Our development will consist of...
Frank, excuse me. Could you just get on the other side?
Yeah, got you. I knew what I was doing. I tried to... These are the three lots, the three proposed house sites. They fit the building square, they all meet the R80 zone. The road comes off of Talkeet Mountain cul-de-sac, comes in at about 568 feet. We put a bend to it to try to keep it away from the wetlands as much as possible and end in a hammerhead which the fire trucks can all turn around and they can pull forward, back up, and leave, pull forward, back up, and leave. Lots all be all the zoning requirements, and as Mark said, we did receive approval today from Farmington Valley. And Farmington Valley's approval right now is for conceptual homes. When we go for approval on building permits, we would have to do a 20-scale of each lot for them. The idea right now is to get approval of the subdivision, build the road, the utilities and all the improvements, finish those, get it all buttoned up, and then go for the individual house site. So, we won't clear the whole site at once. We'll just clear the road right away, and the road ends right at the edge of the existing woods here. Then these will be cleared later as the houses are sold. And we also discussed with the town, they wanted us to see if we could save the big trees and the meadow, and we've done that. All the trees and the meadow will be saved. There are some specimen trees, larger trees at the road right away that need to go for the construction of the road and the drainage and associated grading. And we do also provide access for the Land Trust to their property. They will be allowed to, by deed, traverse by foot and with their maintenance vehicles across a private drive and then across the meadow to access their property there. They'll have a 15-foot easement here, and they can go up and down the drive there. And we are asking for waivers of the width of the road and also the centerline radius to be less than 200 feet. And we do have some issues with the town engineer. There are mostly details. He'd like to see more precise details with more notes on them. And they'd like us to add a note about solar access. I believe that's in our front page, but we can make that more noticeable. We meet all the zoning requirements. We followed LID, Low Impact Development, our drainage. We made the road narrower, less clearing, which is, you know, that's what they want with LID. We did rain gardens to hold back the stormwater, and that's been approved by the Conservation Commission. I think that kind of...
The plantings, the evergreens?
Oh, yes, and we're also going to do some plantings to protect the abutment to the west of the entrance. They have a tennis court right here, but when they did, they did a land exchange, they got this parcel here and Mr. Ellsworth got the 50-foot access into his property. And along with the 50-foot access, he also got a 10-foot easement to clear grade, put utilities. He could actually put pavement in there with written permission, but we kept our pavement seven feet off the property line, and we kept our grading mostly on our property. So, we're not even really grading on his property, but he will lose some big trees here, and to protect his privacy, we're going to put some evergreens in the empty spots along that property line to protect him from us and so we won't have to see the road. Any questions you have to answer?
Mr. Dino, the 18-foot-wide private road?
Yes.
Is that sufficient for two cars to pass coming in the opposite direction?
Yes, it is. Most cars are like five feet wide, five and a half feet wide at most. So, if you've got two cars side by side, it's 11 feet. You've got 18 feet. It's three homes. I don't expect a lot of conflict on the driveway. And they're also, you know, that's, we did one last year on Tower Run, which was approved with 15-foot of pavement and gravel on each side, you know, for trucks. And we still will have a two-foot shelf on either side of the road. There'll be grass, but it'll be there. But I don't expect any of the cars to have to leave the pavement, even if they're passing each other. Even a big SUV, mirror to mirror, is probably seven feet. I know because I measured a bunch of cars in a parking lot with time in the traffic section.
And fire apparatus?
Fire apparatus is, he's fine with it. He's happy with it. He approved the 18 feet. There's a note on the plan saying we have to keep clear to the sky so we can bring his big ladder trucks, the 18-foot wide, so his ladders don't hit any branches or anything. That's, the homeowners association is required to maintain that, and we do that.
And the houses are going to be sprinkled?
Yes, the houses will all have sprinklers.
Your proposal, you're in accord with a letter today from the Farmington Valley Health Department that those adjustments will be made?
Yes, actually, I did it when I was talking about...
I'm sorry?
I actually made those adjustments on the phone when I was talking to them. And we still will have to go back to them with a 20-scale detailed plan for each house. They've approved the concept here, but when the houses are sold, we'll get a specific foundation plan, number of bedrooms, and we have to go back to Farmington Valley and get their approval for each house and approval from the Building Department. And if there's any movement in the houses closer to the wetlands or any more impact, then we'd have to go back to the Conservation Commission. We show as many of the erosion trolls and construction entrance pads on each driveway, so hopefully, don't have to go back to the Conservation Commission. But if there is a change, like if this house for some reason, a person wanted to move it down here closer to the wetlands, we'd have to go back and get permission to do that. Otherwise, they would have to put where it's been approved by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Misses, other questions or comments?
I'm not sure it really pertains to the planning commission, but we've had discussions on homes with sprinkler systems that are on wells. In the event that the power is disrupted, will those sprinkler systems operate?
I believe you'll have generators.
We're proposing generators just for that very reason, and of course, obviously, for other conveniences, but we will have arrangements for that.
I'm not a plumber or enough to do fire sprinklers, but I believe you're required to have a tank in the basement, and that tank has to be charged and have enough water in to run the sprinkler for five minutes. I think that's, I'm not positive, but I believe that's the code.
200 gallons?
200 gallons.
So, we have verbal, the verbal questions that the Farmington Valley Health District got. Do we have a letter?
Yes.
A new one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. What is it on the...
No, I think the, I think staff did a good job reviewing this. I'm sure the applicant has made a number of adjustments based upon staff comments. The scenic hillside protection was the only thing that, I don't know if you want to address that or not at all. The property is located above the 250-foot elevation, and I don't know whether, obviously, the houses haven't been planned yet because lots haven't been sold, but whether at some point in time when you have the building, you know, permit comes in, that would be something you would take a look at with regard to protecting the views in the area.
Yes, we are above the elevation 250, which brings into the, into effect the ridge line protection area, but we are really not at the ridge line. Our project is at the end of Talkeet Mountain Road. In here at elevation 308, and our highest houses are these two, right here at elevation 324. Lucy Way down here, the cul-de-sac is at elevation 400, and Pinnacle Mountain right over here is elevation 390. The road down here is at elevation between 180 and 190, and then it gets flat for about 200 feet, and then it rises up about 180 feet, and then there's two houses in here. And then our project is a meadow, pretty much, and then it drops down to 295 and comes back up to about 310 here. But from here, it rises up to the top of the mountain, which is at elevation 540 plus or minus. So, we're really not on the ridge. We're in a meadow far from the ridge. It's over 2,000 feet to the ridge from here. And as far as clearing, our houses are in the middle of the meadow. This house will be in the woods completely, so I don't think you'll see it at all, and these houses are in the existing field. The existing woods are here, and then there's a pasture here on the McCormicks, and then another house over there, which are all lined with trees. And from, from here, standing in this area, all I see are trees. I can see a view over here in the open space. At the end of the, at the edge of the field, they cut some trees that way, and you can see down into the valley. But from there, you know, there's the view looking west. You don't see anything but trees, and you don't even see the two houses that are below And those are pictures that the town staff took when we went for a walk. You know, like that's, the bench is over here, the bench that we all walk to is over here, and that's where you can see a peekable view this way. But over here at the edge of woods, all you see are the fences, the courses, and then the big trees that are probably 75, 85 tons.
The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, then was just to be sure, I mean, the applicant did address the open space proposal, the open space issue. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that. They went to additional effort to propose that overall plan showing how it all fits into the parcel, so I just want to make sure that people are clear about that.
That'd be the wave of trust parcel. That's clear. That's, that's part of the entire thing built, but that's exactly what's proposed here now.
That's 75 acres out of the total 95, five more, making 80, going to the neighbors. So, there's really 80 out of the 90 acres which will remain as open space.
Is that, that's a good question. The part that's going to the McCormick, that's going to be restricted in any way as open space, or that's just going to them as a separate parcel?
That would be added to their existing parcels so that it'll be subject to your existing regulations in terms of what can and can't be done there.
Okay. Are you saying that the five acres is, will be open space or not decided?
We frankly have no...
I'm a little hard to hear and decide here to say.
Yeah, we have no input on that. Our understanding is that it'll become part of that parcel, and the gentleman will continue to use it as he uses the rest of his acreage. I believe he has horses, and my understanding, and again, it's my understanding, is that would be part of the horse pasturing and whatnot. But again, I, it's not part of our application. Attorney Donahue is here on behalf of Mr. Ellsworth. Perhaps he can address any questions you may have on that specific...
With respect to the specific question on the McCormick parcel, it becomes part of the existing lot. It will be subject to all subdivision regulation, which means it can't be subdivided. So, functionally, it will be open space. But in terms of dedicated open space, it's more important for the board to focus on the 75 acres, which is going to be conveyed in total in fee to the Land Trust. The five acres, it can function as open space because you can't do much with it. It's going to be open, but it's going to be part of Mr. McCormick's lot. His passion and his activity is horses and having horses on the property, and that's what's going to be the continued use of the property. I'd also like to report, I'd like to thank the commission on behalf of the Ellsworth family. They've been involved in this endeavor for quite some time to try to preserve the maximum amount of land on this site. It's very special land. I'm sure you all have been on it and seen it. And this scheme and the approval of the Magliary subdivision will assure that this, that 75 acres will get to the Land Trust, which will be important for now and forever. Dick Davis of the Simsbury Land Trust in charge of the acquisition advised me by phone this morning that they will close on this within 30 days as long as this piece goes forward and the entire package is together. So, we look forward to a speedy conclusion of this process.
Is this 70-some-odd acre parcel in addition to the open, or the other open space that was associated with Tanniger Hill?
The covenants on that open space is that if this transaction is completed, that open space will be released. That's still going to be, there are going to be no more lots there, but the primary lot number one, that, the covenant when we put that on was that that will be released if this is consummated and the 75 acres goes to Land Trust.
So, remember, lots of discussions on putting 16 houses on that other parcel that was slated for Land Trust purchase?
That's the 75 acres?
That's this?
Yes. And I'm not sure of the number, but it's something like that.
I'm just concerned because originally, this was supposed to be all Land Trust purchase, right?
At the outset, we, the Wellsworths committed a contract to the Land Trust, and the Land Trust does great things, but they tried to get their funding in place and tried to get through it, and this was...
Mechanism?
This was a compromise solution that got the maximum, to save land.
I know that you've told us that the Land Trust expects to close within 30 days upon approval of the plan, but if that doesn't happen, what would be considered for the 70-some-odd acres then?
The, that's a theoretical question. It's a good one. If the Land Trust can't close, the Ellsworths are going to continue to own it, and what happens to it would be an open question. But I got to assure you that there are four major pieces of the funding for the contract, and they are all in place. The Land Trust has in fact commenced their closing cycle, and you can be pretty assured that that's going to get done.
Mr. Chairman? I sure wouldn't want to have another application put in to subdivide that 70 acres in, you know, a period of time not too far in the future. That would be totally contrary to the whole proposition of why the board may approve this application. Alternatively, we could, we could insist that open space be carved out of some of the, you know, the other part of the land to prevent, in the event that the Land Trust deal doesn't go through, there would still be a certain amount of open space reserved.
If you approve this on the condition that the Land Trust be the conservation piece, then that has to go, or you don't have, you don't have a good approval. I think that's what you're saying, but if you approve this based upon the fact that the open space requirement will be fulfilled with the closing of the 75 acres of the Land Trust, that has to happen, or you don't have, you don't have approval.
Other comments? So, with the open space and the road, 18-foot road, are there anything else that has to be included in the motion?
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I also mentioned the waiver for the centerline radius, which is technical requirement for requirements town engineer seeing that, is okay with that. I would say that should you decide to close the hearing in that conference this evening, that if you wanted to approve it, I would simply say that the notes as indicated by staff that still need to be addressed, be addressed at some point prior to construction, including those from the town engineer, especially including those notes from the Conservation Commission's approval. The waiver of the 18-foot road would be one as well, centerline radius, as I just mentioned, as well. I think that the motion should also probably note that the sprinklers and generators are, as proposed, be part of it. The open space, and I think as Attorney Donahue said, the open space, and this goes to Mr. Rice's question, I believe this is correct, that the open space is shown on the map, the 75 acres, that if that were not obtained and closed down by the Land Trust within, by the time the map needs to be filed, which gives them more than 30 days, but it gives them 90 days, then the decision would come back to the commission for reexamination. I think, I think that'll protect everybody and take care of the concerns. So, those are the things that I would put in it should you decide to approve.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Is this still an open public hearing?
Yes.
So, maybe we should ask for any comments from residents.
Is there anybody from the public would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Anne Weld. Do you want me to come up?
You want to come up so we can, so we can hear you?
Sure.
Stop us.
My name is Anne Weld, and I'm from Five Heaven Lane. I actually live down off of... I actually live down off of East Wheaton Street, not directly on and above or to this property, but on, impacted by another development of this, of the owner of this property off of East Wheaton Street. So I have two concerns. One is that I'm, and I spoke to this at the Conservation Commission meeting the other night, is that if there is a private road, that there be very detailed conditions so that, because there are drainage problems on Talka Mountain Road that have actually been documented by town staff, talked about at the Conservation Commission hearing, so that it doesn't add to those problems, but so because it's a private road, that there be very detailed instructions, not just at the construction time, but so that in perpetuity, so people understand what happens. This is a very complicated property. It's sloped, it's got wetlands, so that the homeowners know very detailed instructions as to what goes on with the, with the private road. But the other thing is that at the Conservation Commission, we talked about the land trust property, and it was unclear based on the testimony of the property owner that it was somehow related to something going on at the state. So whether or not that was going to actually be obtained. So I would, I would like to see if there's been some more update on that. Because if, again, we're all talking about if this does go to the land trust, but if that's, I'd like to hear some sort of testimony by the owner of the property if that is going to go forward. Because we're waiving a lot and we're waiving the road. The town is, the planning board is waiving the road requirements and also the open space requirements based on testimony. And if it doesn't actually happen, then I think, I think we're kind of going down a very... It just very, concerns me a lot because of the drainage problems on the other property on East Wheaton Street. So I'd just like to, I'm really asking the planning board, the planning commission to make these conditions very, very specific, not only on the open space, but on the private road. Because these things, what happens when these conditions aren't very specifically laid out, they're very hard to enforce and then follow up on from legal letter and practical law. Thank you.
Any comments?
In response to that, that was brought up by the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission, as part of their approval, wants us to change the easements to the homeowners association for maintenance and repair of any of the drainage system to also include the town of Simsbury. So the town of Simsbury can go in there and enforce the maintenance and repair of any of the issues that may occur in the storm drainage. And we also are going to prepare a maintenance and inspection checklist that will have to be followed by the homeowners association yearly. And it will have to be maintained, it will have to be cleaned. Because as we all know, that's the biggest problem with storm drainages. It's not maintained, it's not cleaned, and then therefore fails. But we are doing rain gardens. They will help clean any of the surface runoff. Plants in there will capture the, any sediment running off, and they will grow and we will do maintenance on them. And we also have filter strips along the woods towards the open space to keep anything from going in the woods. And the Conservation Commission did approve it. And one of the comments was that we should make it so the town can enforce it. That is part of the approval from the Conservation Commission. And that will be added. That was last Tuesday, so I have not, and I just got the report, I think, on Thursday or Friday.
Appreciate that. You read that Friday, it's in the report, so appreciate that. Other comments, commissioners, questions?
So who actually does the inspection, the town is?
No, they will have to hire a engineer.
They hire somebody to do that yearly?
Yes.
Anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Rice, your motion, Bill?
You want to close here first?
Yeah, was I seated or?
I guess, yeah, you're seated.
Okay, you didn't.
Still got a full public.
An alternate in my...
I've got an alternate for Alan. We have a, we have a quorum, pause. You had to close the hearing, you put in the motion. I didn't already say close the public hearing. Yeah, okay, thanks. Any more comments from the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There's a lot, a lot to this application, Hyrum. I'm not quite sure I'm going to be able to reiterate everything in a motion.
You know, I think the way that, you know, Hearn's got about seven points there. And I think it would be better if he went through his checklist and then we reacted to that. And he had some new stuff. If you could, would you mind?
Could you do something else, Bill?
Yeah, before any motion is made, there were at least one memorandum issued by the Conservation Commission stating their position on the fee in lieu of open space versus dealing property to the town versus land trust purchasing the property. Can you summarize that, Hyrum?
Yeah, I think I can give you a paragraph, just a short thing on that, Bill. The property owner proposed to set up initially a contingent fee with regard to fee in lieu of open space as allowed under our regulations. Conservation Commission discussed this at length and decided that based upon the map as proposed here, that fee in lieu of was not appropriate in this case. Subsequently, they talked about dedication of open space, 20% of open space. And I think that the applicant convinced the Conservation Commission that if the land trust acquisition goes through, that that would satisfy, more than significantly satisfy, the open space requirement, 20% open space requirement for the subdivision. So in short, they said that their approval was based upon the fact that the land trust would in fact acquire that 75 acres, that the fee in lieu of was not appropriate in this case. That's basically the bottom line of their long discussion on it. The other thing I think that's worth noting too, I think, is Mr. Denny just said, there was a lot of discussion, I know staff, we discussed it quite a bit as well, with regard to how the maintenance would take place. And this is a comment that was made by a member of the public, how the open, how the maintenance would take place. And the commission in the recent past has decided that taking on these responsibilities is not something that we want to continue to do on and on. And so the compromise that was reached was that the homeowners association would take care of that maintenance, but that the town would have the ability to do it should that become necessary. So that was the compromise that was reached there, which seemed a reasonable approach to staff as well. And it's important in this particular case as well. So the two things really had to do with open space and the maintenance of those, the infrastructure. That was important.
As far as the maintenance is concerned, it's just they're going to hire somebody to take care of it?
On annual basis.
On annual basis, and will that be filed with the town?
Well, I would say that as part of the, the town engineer's recommendations, that those documents will all be part of the filing that will be filed on the land records. So it's there for anyone to see, anyone who purchases a lot, it's there for anyone who researches a lot. That will be filed on the land records. That would be one of my recommendations as part of the approval, should we decide to do that.
Do you want to, do you want to go through the litany again, just so it's all clear?
Sure. Please. Let's say if the commission decide to approve the application, it would be approved based upon the fact that the notes as indicated by staff, especially including the town engineer, and notes which were part of the Conservation Commission approval, specifically including maintenance documents to be filed on the land records, waiver of the 18-foot road width, waiver of the centerline radius requirement in the town road regulations. Applicant mentioned the sprinklers would be powered by generators. That's part of the proposal. And that the open space, 75 acres of open space to Simsbury Land Trust, applicant stated that would close within 30 days. Recommendation, should this motion be accepted, was that this closing would need to take place prior to the filing of the record mylar from the land records. I think that will take care of, protect.
Maybe, Lawrence. I'll embellish it a little bit.
Good.
I'd like to move that application number 14-02 of Magliary Development LLC agent Timothy E. and Eleanor E. Ellsworth owners requesting re-subdivision of the property located at East Wheaton Street, map H11, block 106, lot 037, to create four lots, zone R80. Be approved with the conditions as stated by Mr. Hyrum Beck.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I may, I didn't mean to lead anyone down a path one way or the other. The 75 acres is a very generous amount of land to be included as open space, albeit with the land trust on a parcel this size. So I think it's, I think it's a, it strikes a great balance between development and preservation of the open space.
On a beautiful piece of property. We also have in the file a letter from the Open Space Committee, and we have, of course, the Fire Marshal's approval. So these are all covered 100%.
Hyrum, should we identify the town engineer's memorandum?
I didn't do it, Bill, because I don't want to miss anything. I would simply say that that memorandum is all part of the entire package that we had. And so as I construct the approval letter, I would go back through that, just pick out the things which have not been addressed and list those.
And waivers, are those going to be, did you itemize those?
I did.
Yeah.
And you, and you could act on those first if you like. The motion's already been made and seconded. That included the waiver of the 18-foot road width and the waiver of the centerline radius requirement.
We had a motion to accept those waivers?
I believe that was.
Yes.
It's all part of the same motion?
Yes.
Usually we vote on the waivers separately.
You can do that if you like. I just, I put them, just put them in order and perhaps out of order, sorry.
Because I think the waiver has a higher percentage of positive votes to pass than a regular motion.
Sure or not true?
The waivers are pretty clear, I think. In the motion, that they're there. We have the letter from the Fire Marshal explaining that, you know, he accepted. I think, you know, not looking into real big stuff here. I think we can, we can include that in the general acceptance motion.
But, Senator, if you'd rather move the waivers first and then do the thing from a company about...
I think we should do that.
Sure.
So can we table this motion?
Yes. Want to make a motion?
Yeah. Okay, so what's the first one, Lawrence?
The applicant's request for the waiver of the 18-foot road width.
Make a motion for the first waiver for the 18-foot.
Second?
Second.
Evan, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Carers?
Second waiver request is for the waiver of the centerline radius as required in the town's proposed amendments.
A motion?
Make a motion again on the, on the centerline waiver.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Drew?
There were only two?
There was really only two. Yes, there were only two.
Do you want to make another motion?
You want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to include the positive results of the waiver notes.
Okay, we have a second for your motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Drew?
Thank you very much.
Have you got to find someone to pave this road?
We're taking bids.
I know a guy.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience. All right. Public hearing B, application 14-03 of Landworks Development LLC agent and St. Bedford Realty Corporation owner requesting re-subdivision of the property located 225 Powder Forest Drive, assessors map F14, block 103, lot 205-5, to create two lots, zone PAD, received 11/25/2014. Public hearing closed 11/25/2014. Decision must be rendered by 1/25/2015. Will the applicant step forward, please?
I believe the public hearing for this commission is closed already. But I do have a map if you'd like to see it.
Just refresh us.
This is the, there was a...
Would you introduce yourself, Mr. Nelson?
Chris Nelson, Landworks Development. There was a PAD that included three different parcels. This parcel only include, this application only included parcel five and six, which is this entire development area. Actually, it's more than three, there's three different uses within the PAD. These are apartments and these over here are condominiums. It is not developed at all right now. It's part of the Powder Forest subdivision. But we're here because there's not a formal subdivision approval that is easy to locate that shows exactly where a line is dividing five and six.
This is the parcel that's been taxed as two pieces, but...
Yes, this has been taxed as two pieces. There is a map on file that shows a line right here. And we would like that line to be right here. There's only some bounds for it anyways. The cleanest way for title insurance is just to submit the request that we did for the subdivision. Is that a... Any questions?
Questions?
Just moving the line, that's all we're doing?
Just moving the line.
And formalizing the two lines.
Correct. All other actions on this development have already been addressed. This is only a subdivision line issue right now.
Hyrum?
I don't really have anything else to add other than just, Bill just said that formalizing the location of that line and approving it is what they're asking to do. Separates the two different products, and that's essentially the purpose, as I understand.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve application 14-03 of Landworks Development LLC agent and St. Bedford Realty Corporation owner requesting a re-subdivision of property located at 225 Powder Forest Drive, assessors map F14, block 103, lot 00-5, to create two lots, zone PAD.
Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so exhaustive search of the town records has been performed.
Yes.
Hyrum, what would happen if we approved this application and the subdivision... and the subdivision goes through? And next week, someone finds a map that actually shows a previous subdivision?
Your most recent action would stand, though. I believe this is called a re-subdivision. It is, and that's another reason, too. This is sort of the most extreme treatment that it could have because of the public hearing and so on. In order to confirm that it was done properly, public hearing was held. Maps that are properly show where that line is have been presented and considered by the commission. So the most, commission's most current action would take precedence. And the reason is, and I don't know, is anybody from Powder Forest still here? Those lines were originally established and were never really formalized the way they needed to be formalized, and I think that's why Landworks is being extra cautious by doing it properly, and that's why we recommended it go this way.
So who owns the property right now?
Ensign Bickford Realty.
Both parcels?
Both parcels.
So you have no concerns about moving that line?
Right on board with it, we're right with it.
Okay, any other questions? Have your motions been seconded? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. I've been coming on like all night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, Hyrum's going to talk to us about the budget. Couple hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not sure that I have a lot to say about it. I will tell you this, that what I would like to do would be to include in the budget presentation to the Board of Slight and so on, whatever things that the planning commission would like to undertake or accomplish this year, make a presentation about that. So right now, we have a sort of a short window, narrow window, small window, I guess that's a better way to put it, about how we could deal with various things that might be on your mind. I haven't said, here's what we ought to do. We have started the Wheaton Village District Study. That's about halfway done. I've tried a number of ways and times to get that refunded and started up and finished. That might be one thing that I would suggest to you that, you know, if you want, we can support that. And frankly, I'm not so concerned, or concerned at all, really, as to which land use commission supports it or if the money ends up in my budget and we all do it. I don't really care. But my suggestion would be that we do that and finish that up. I think that has a lot of, not only economic development potential, but a lot of planning potential for that whole Wheaton area around the inn, around Mitchell's and so on, all the way from 185 to Powder Forest. So I think that's a good idea. But what I'm really here to do is to tell you, in the next day or two, whether you have it tonight or the next day or two, really love to get your ideas about other things that you might be ought to be doing as a planning commission. One of the things that always comes up with planning commissions is they, I shouldn't say always, but a lot of times is that they get kind of pigeonholed into doing the planning development and subdivisions. That's kind of it. And no question that statutorily, that's your primary responsibility. But I don't think that's any reason why we shouldn't think outside the box and suggest other things that you might want to do, other projects, other things that you think we ought to do. So you want to spend a few minutes talking about it now, I'm happy to do that. If it comes up in the next day or two, just email me and I'll circulate that to everybody as well, make it part of my presentation. But I'd love to have whatever input you have into the budget process so that we don't just sort of skip over it and say, oh, we didn't, we talked about it, we didn't plan anything or propose anything.
So this where you can bring up the discussion on the pad, then?
Could.
About reviewing the pad.
We could do that, you know, internally. That wouldn't really require any necessary budget to do that. Happy to do that. I would tell you this, too, I think, actually, maybe Bob brought it up, I think emailed me one time recently. The zoning commission will be revising or looking at revising their zoning regulations starting probably in January through September, October this year. And that discussion will involve this commission, will involve all the commissions as well as the public. So that discussion's going to be part of that whole process. I can tell you that right now. It's already on the. So if there's anything else that you think we should propose or anything that you think would require expenditure funds, happy to include that.
Yeah, one of the things I think we should look at, at least having a, at least a line out in budget for, you know, training or seminars, that type of thing.
Yep.
Hyrum, because that, you know, it's a scramble, but, I mean, I know we're not talking about a lot of money, but still, out of pocket for commissioners to go to some of these seminars, I mean, just to, just register and go is really kind of, there should be at least a line out in there so we can get it covered.
Yep.
You know, and I know you set out something. And maybe that's a land use thing versus a, you know, just planning commission, but we have, you know, we have situations where we're asked to go and then, you know, we personally pay out of pocket and yet reimbursement is.
Yeah, absolutely, that shouldn't happen. I think it did happen.
Yes.
Once already.
Twice.
Should not have.
Twice, really. Yeah, well, one recently and one last cycle.
Okay, that should not happen. And I did put money in the budget last time and it was taken out. I'll try that again.
But at least we put it in and say, look, we want to do this, and we know it's been, we know that subject has been brought up at EGTC as well.
Yeah, and I tell you, and just so folks know, that March 21st is the next time the Bar Association's going to do that. And that's a really good one, if you like that stuff at all. It's really, really good to sort of update a whole land use law thing.
Yeah.
So.
Like bar talk.
That's particularly important, too, if new people come on to start from, you know, the, I mean, we've all, some of us have been to that thing in Middletown, I signed up for on the 21st to go again because it's always new stuff and we can't have, you know, it's just a lot of issues that we have to keep up with and stuff on. The other thing that, and it's premature, but last time we did the planning conservation development, we had, we actually hired outside help to help with that, to do special things. And not that Hyrum probably couldn't do it, but if you've seen his desk, he's got a lot of stuff going on. That may come up, and that probably wouldn't be in this budget year because we're talking, well, actually, we have to have it done by 2017, is that correct?
Yeah.
So last time, it took us over a year, year and a half, so that might be something that we should put in there, too.
I think that maybe, you know, to get items that are probably not considered a capital item, but it's probably considered a capital non-recurring item. So to give an advance warning, give the board finance an advance warning that within the next two years, we're going to be asking for this so that the next time we do a budget, it's there. I think it's probably not a bad idea.
Is there some preliminary work we should be doing on that? Or maybe you should have a consultant, so there should be something in there for this?
You know.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I understand. I think that, I mean, right now, to me, the planning development stood up pretty well so far. I think that it's really done pretty well, I think.
What we have with apartments and all those PADs, we've had a lot of stuff to think about, I think. And maybe we can make it more concise and.
I think that what some towns have done, it's kind of interesting, is a lot of them have done the sort of conventional type plan that we have now. And the next time they did it, they looked at more of a strategic approach, sort of a pared-down strategic approach, probably less wording, but more focused on specific issues. Whether there was an issue with regard to particular, developing a particular area of town, something about the environment, something about housing, whatever it happened to be, it was sort of a strategic focus to sort of focus on that. And that might be something we want to consider, is the existing plan could continue to stand, but the amendments to it might be part of a strategic plan. It just might be one way to look at it. So we could certainly talk about, talk about that. But we could certainly put them on notice that within the next two budget cycles, we would definitely want to see some funding for the plan update. I think that's a good idea.
Hyrum, are there organizations that could come describe current trends in planning? You know, we live, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but we live in a micro, I live in a microcosm of the valley here, and I'm not necessarily familiar with what might be trending in other areas of the state, of the country, just something that maybe we should think about for incorporation into the next POCD.
Yep. You know, we talked about seminars and things. Actually, this year, and this isn't something we probably all can do, the American Planning Association National Conference is in Seattle this year. Last year, I think it was Atlanta. And that's probably one of the most comprehensive collections of topics that you could imagine, transportation, housing, new planning concepts, all different kinds of things like that. I'd be glad to share some of that and stuff with you as well. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to afford to go this year either, but I would like to, and that's certainly a possibility. A little bit closer to home, there's going to be a northeast regional planning conference in Saratoga Springs. And that's not a bad drive, it's a couple hours, three hours, maybe. And I think that's a couple, a couple of days. I'm not sure the exact date of that yet. But that's one way, too, and that's not all that expensive. It might be a couple hundred bucks, and I'm sure we could work out, you know, some, something that get some commissioners to go to that. But that might be a way to do it, too. And I think that will be kind of a pared-down version of the national conference, but that should be pretty interesting as well. As soon as I get agendas on that stuff, I'll be glad to forward that as well. There's a lot of stuff going on, and if you let me know your specific, what you might specifically be interested in, whether it's technology or economics or housing or environmental control, whatever it might be, let me know, because there are all kinds of things that come in all the time. And I never know exactly, you know, what you're interested in or what to forward on to you, but I'm happy to do that anytime you want. There's a partnership of strong communities, focuses on housing. They do a lot with economic development housing. There are meetings in Hartford pretty consistently, and those are free. They're usually in the morning, and they probably last a couple hours. They don't really take the whole day. Once in a while, you get a sandwich out of them, but they're, they're pretty good meetings. They bring in people from all over the country to talk about stuff, and I'm happy to forward that stuff on to you as well. So if you're interested in that, I'm happy to do that, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, there's discussion, you know, lately about, should we look at the formal government and some sort of such? And I don't know if that would ever, even if things change between selectmen and or town manager, you hear these things, but that would, that would not affect land use commissions, would it? Or would it? I'm not familiar with how other towns handle that.
I don't think that change in and of itself would. But one of the things, as I understand it, and I've been very careful to stay out of charter revision commission meetings in the past, is that there's always been discussion about whether commissions should be combined or not, whether there should be any reason to combine planning commission with zoning commission, whether other commissions should be combined, whether design review responsibilities should be rolled into the zoning commission or some other commission. So those are questions that always take place. I'm not sure that the town manager versus, for selectmen versus mayor is something this commission would want to get involved in. I'm not sure.
The effect on the planning commission, it's a statutory requirement, you know, state statutory requirement, it's not something that's determined by the chief executive of the town.
But if they have a charter revision commission to discuss that, that it always seems to me, planning and zoning, where it always comes up, at least it's something they discuss. And, you know, I know that like in Avon when Phil Shanks was town manager and they helped him by planning and zoning, and it was, it was, we always got accused of being difficult compared to them, you know, whether it's true or not.
I think, it's just, well, it's just my own opinion that there's no doubt that somebody could find something wrong with any application they want to. It's also, we've worked really, really hard with the applicants and then recent applicants, no exception, to really put them through it and to make sure that they do what we need them to do, town engineer, fire marshal, WPCA, whatever it is. And we hope that by the time it gets here, there are no sort of big questions hanging out there that, where it shouldn't be here. So if people want to say that makes it easier, that's fine. I would sort of say, we want to make it predictable. You've got a lousy application, it's not going to go anywhere. You folks should not even waste your time with it, and we hope that that's the case. Lots of people come in every day with ideas that you wouldn't believe, but you don't see them, and hopefully, we won't waste your time with that. So we're hopeful that by the time it does get to you, that those are good applications. That's what we'd like to do. We're also working really hard right now, too, with regard to enforcement of the regulations. Signs are really, really hard. We're continuing to work on that. Still working on blight, we still have a lot of issues with regard to blight, trying to make sure that folks that have properties that need to be cleaned up do get cleaned up. So we're still getting a lot of sort of pushback from some folks.
Open building permits?
Actually, we're doing pretty, pretty good on that, I think. So things that have been hanging, sort of hanging out there for years, we've gotten some help with regard to the files, and we've really cleaned up an awful lot of that stuff. So as Bert pointed out, if I could just get my office cleaned up, it'd be a really good shame. Happy to do that sometime soon. But as I said before, if other things pop up in the next day or two that you think we ought to be undertaking, or specific projects that I think we should be looking at, just let me know, and I'm glad to get that around.
The regional planning commission meeting is Thursday night. I'll pose that question to the group that's there, you know. Just poll them and see, are there anything that you're considering now for inclusion in your budgets that maybe the other towns might be interested in?
Excellent. You know, I read where Emily Upworth is going to make a presentation. I think I complete streets that night.
Yeah.
That should be very good. Emily's done a lot of work on that. She was the cry person with our corridor study here, our weekend corridor study. She did a lot of work herself on that as well, so that should be a good presentation. The whole complete streets thing is kind of an interesting topic in and of itself, making sure that people can walk and bike as well as drive down the street. So it's pretty good.
Anything else before we do a minutes?
Thank you very much. And, you know, Bill's absolutely correct in that motion to straighten the order of that out. That was absolutely correct.
Mr. Craig's absence, I will like to move that we approve the minutes of November 8th, 2014, which is a special meeting, sidewalk. And it's one page. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, or comments on the page?
You have a motion to approve?
Motion approved, minutes of November 8th, 2014, as written.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rice? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Minutes of November 25th, regular meeting. Page one.
Do we have a motion?
Move to accept the planning commission minutes of November 25th, 2014, as submitted.
You have a second? I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stained.
Stained.
So now there's a change in the minoting process, right, Janice?
Yes.
So they're automatically approved? Is that what's going to happen?
I believe they're out there within seven days, as they are. But your approval isn't until you have your next meeting.
Okay, so the change.
That's like then subject to vote.
Ah, okay, so the change is they're published, but not necessarily approved?
Until we.
It kind of requires someone to look at, choose the minutes if they want to.
The idea is to get them to the public quicker.
Absolutely.
So if we.
The secretary doesn't have to sign them anymore.
We had a couple of missed meetings in December due to things, so that way they get out, but they're not official until we do what just did.
The secretary doesn't have to sign them at all? Or do they sign them final?
No, they don't sign them anymore, they don't have to. They could, they want to.
Mr. Bell, you have a motion to make?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Any objection? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, this is your TV. Thank you again, this is your table.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.